Okay, I have 5:30. Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam City Clerk?
This is the regular Southgate Housing Authority regular meeting agenda. Roll call, Chairperson Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Davila.
Present.
Authority Member Barron.
Present.
Authority Member Davila. I'm sorry, Authority Member.
Avalos.
Sorry. President, Authority Member Rios.
Present.
Executive Director Jeff. Sorry. Rob Houston.
Present.
Thank you. Authority Council.
Just for the record to reflect, Authority Member Avalos is present.
Thank you. And the City Treasurer is excused. Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $75 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, so we are doing first the Housing Authority. Public hearing, go ahead and start that.
Item number one, following the conclusion of the public hearing, the Southgate Housing Authority will consider A approving the annual public housing agency plan for fiscal year 2425 pertaining to the city's Section 8 program and city's housing authority's overall mission, B authorizing the chairperson to execute the certification by state or local official of PHA plans, the civil rights certification and the PHA certification of compliance with PHA plan and related regulations in a form acceptable to the special lieu council, and C authorizing the executive director of his, or his designee to submit the PHA plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, and who's in the presentation?
Good evening, Chairman and Authority members. We're doing a presentation of the Southgate Housing Authority for fiscal year 2425 annual plan. Next. Just to give you a background, the housing authorities are required to prepare an agency five-year and an annual plan, which is generally called as the Agency Plan. The annual plan provides detailed information about the status of the Section 8 program that is also known as the Housing Choice Voucher. And then the Southgate Housing Authority has a standard status recognition from HUD. And the annual plan also outlines the financial resources, the progress on the mission and goals. The public agency plans are comprehensive guides to public housing agency policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. So we are required to submit the five-year plan, every five years we have to submit that, and the annual plan that we have to submit on an annual basis. The Section 8, the, the Southgate Housing Authority receives only Section 8 tenant-based assistance. Thank you. The PHA plan goals and objectives for fiscal year 2425 is leasing to increase lease and budget utilization. For the waiting list, we plan to open the waiting list in the summer of 2024. Inspections, we required, or we have been working on inspecting 100% of the Southgate Housing Authority units, the Section 8 rental units. And also in regards to housing stock, our goal is to increase available units to 400 units. The goals and objectives that we have is to continue to work with grants such as CDVG and Home to assist tenants landlords with maintenance of the housing stock and assistance with security utility and utility deposits when funds are available. For the CMAP, we need to improve Section 8 Management Assessment, is the Section 8 Management Assessment Program, CMAP. So we're working on improving the scores this year to accomplish the high standard performance. And therefore, under fair housing, our goal is to promote equal opportunity housing rights to residents, tenants, and landlords. And also to continue to work with the Fair Housing Council of the Long Beach to offer workshops to tenants and landlords on rental rights and discrimination and screening and other issues regarding housing rights. Also in regards to training, staff continues to participate in training. We attend for housing trainings as well as Nanma K and Associates trainings for the Housing Choice Voucher, issues to stay abreast of the regulations and program updates. Currently, HUD is updating the Section 8 program as well as the inspection program. It used to be HQS and now it's gonna be Inspire. We're still in the process and so later on, we're gonna bring you the administrative plan for review and amendment. So the public hearing for comment tonight is to, for the Board of Directors to conduct a public hearing to discuss the PHA plan. And all the comments regarding the PHA plans will be presented to the board and also included in the PHA plan. Next one? Thank you. So the Housing Choice Voucher and, we have the Housing Choice Voucher and the Emergency Housing Vouchers. The Southgate Housing Authority receives funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to administer the Housing Choice Voucher, also known as Section 8, and the Emergency Housing Voucher programs. The Housing Choice Voucher has been with the City of Southgate since the 1970s and currently is assisting approximately 354 families. The Emergency Housing Voucher program has a total of 34 Housing Choice vouchers that were issued through the American Rescue Plan Act during COVID, also known as ARPA. The Southgate Housing Authority has issued 29 vouchers and leased up 16 units. These EHB vouchers are specifically for those that are homeless, at risk of homelessness, those that are victims of domestic violence or human trafficking. So they're very specific. The Housing Choice Voucher provides a 70% subsidy to qualified participants. The subsidies range from approximately 600 to 2,000 per month for one to four bedroom units. Also, the projected annual budget of the program for fiscal year 2425 is 5.4 million, approximately $548,511 in administrative, administration, administration fee, sorry, for the HCV program and $46,065 in administration fees for the Emergency Housing Voucher program. So the recommended actions are to approve the annual public housing plan for fiscal year, sorry, it says 2324, should be 2425 pertaining to the city's Section 8 program and the city's housing authority's overall mission. Also to authorize the chairperson to execute the certification for, by state or local official of the PHA plan, the civil rights certification, and the PHA certification of compliance with the PHA plan and related regulations in a form acceptable to the city attorney. And last, authorize the executive director or his designee to submit the PHA plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna open up to the audience first, but before we do that, we didn't catch your name and title, just so that.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
My name is Carol Avril, I'm the Housing Manager.
Yeah, 'cause we hear the voice, but people, what was that? 'Cause they can't see you. Okay, let me open up to the audience first. Anybody in the audience wishing to address on this item? Step forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm close the audience portion, colleagues? Any questions?
Did we receive any comments?
No.
There's none.
None. Did you have a question? Yes, no? Well, it was very thorough. You have a question? Okay, my bad. Thank you, Carol, for the report. We have about, like you mentioned, 300 and something current families being assisted in the Section 8 program, right? And you wanna go for another 400? So I know you're having some trouble getting the leasing part of it. What are we doing in that regard to increase the housing stock for these people that are families that are needy in that regard? And then the other question I have is related to, you know, a lot of times these people are on, you know, section housing for a long time, right? And is it creating that dependency where it's hard for them to get out of it? Because I know that sometimes the welfare kinda syndrome where people have a hard time getting out because then, you know, so are we doing anything to help people so that they can move on with their, you know, so they could have more subsistence to move on? I mean, so they could create other opportunities for other, because sometimes it creates kind of a situation where they can't get out of it. I mean, are we doing anything in that regard?
Sure. Just to answer your first question in regards to the leasing, we have been doing property owners outreach. And through the inspections that we have been doing for quality control, the annual recertifications, and for new residents, the inspectors have been also bringing a lot of information to property owners. And so through the inspections, we have been making a lot of changes and enforcing the standards that are required under the Section 8 program. So we have many of the property owners that are fixing the units. Actually, there are some that are replacing the roof, some that are really doing a lot of work inside the property. So we're really pleased to see that. And so the same property owners, now that they're being, you know, held up to standards for the program, they are, they're liking that even though it's kind of weird, we haven't get a lot of opposition from them and they really appreciate the fact that we are being very informative. And so if they have other units, they're coming to us and saying, hey, I have other units I would like to rent to for, for Section 8 tenants. And then we have been in contact with other property owners and they have been really willing to participate in the program. And we have a lot of people that are building ADUs too that are also offering their ADUs for Section 8. So we've seen an increase of property owners that wanted to participate on the program. And so we're working with them. We, they have to complete certain information or provide the information to the housing authority. And so when they have units available, we have the information available to residents so we can match them to the units. And in regards to what are we doing to help those that have been on Section 8 for a long time? First of all, we are required to do annual recertifications. And through the annual recertifications, we make sure that they are still in compliance and can participate in the program. The, the City of Southgate Housing Authority does not have a program that HUD offers, which is called the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. That program is the one that assists families to get in a different path to move on out of Section 8. So that is a program that is offered by larger housing authorities and sometimes, you know, we can coordinate with them. But most of the time, we have a lot of families that are very low income that haven't been able to move out of Section 8 yet.
Mr. Mayor?
We, actually, we just finished to perch the waiting list. So those that were in the waiting list, we're calling them, they're bringing all their information so that we'll be able to get a voucher and rent a unit. So we are in, you know, working in regards to opening the waiting list. We probably will be doing that during early summer. And we will, we're working with our software system to have an application that will be available on, on your phone so people can apply. Or if they need assistance, we're gonna have a site where they can come and we can help them sign up for the program. But after that, because usually we get thousands of applicants, and it could be applicants from anywhere in the country, we do conduct a lottery. So, and we probably will be selecting about 2,500 people to be on the waiting list. So that's what we're doing.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just had a question. What percentage of participant actually move out of Section 8?
We have a very low, I would say 1% to 0, because most of them are, most of the participants are extremely low or very low income.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so you indicated we have the emergency housing and you said 16 units. Of those 16 units, how many were families that we actually serviced or that we were able to provide that assistance to?
Most of the people that we have assisted under the Emergency Housing Voucher are those that are homeless that have been referred to us through LASA. We have that requirement and we have a memorandum of understanding with LASA, so, so they have to refer the participants to the housing authorities.
So they were not Southgate residents, they came from surrounding cities?
It could be some that are Southgate residents. It's just that they have to go through an agency and then the agency has to connect them with LASA. They usually put them in the HMIS system and then they get referred based on the area where they, they are.
So we don't know exactly how many families we helped? Just 16 individuals?
For the emergency housing, I think, I don't think we have any families. We just have single individuals.
Thank you. Do you know how much we have in that fund?
I'm sorry?
Or how much was allocated to that emergency housing fund?
I think it was like about, close to 300,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm gonna make a motion for A, B, and C.
Second?
We have a motion in second roll call, please.
Chairperson Hurtado?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Davila?
Yes.
Authority Member Barron?
Yes.
Authority Member Avalos?
Yes.
Authority Member Rios?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number two.
The Housing Authority will consider approving the regular meeting minutes of December 12, 2023.
Okay, at this time, any member of the audience wishes to address that item? Seeing no one, step forward, I'm gonna close that.
Motion to approve. Second?
Okay, we have a motion in second roll call.
Chairperson Hurtado?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Davila?
Yes.
Authority Member Barron?
Yes.
Authority Member Avalos?
Yes.
Authority Member Rios?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, were comments from the audience? Anybody in the audience wishing to address the council on anything not on the agenda, yes, but dealing with the Housing Authority, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close that portion. Let's see, that's it. I'll let it take a motion. We have a motion to adjourn. In a second. Okay, seeing no opposition, we're adjourned. Okay. Tell me when you're ready for the next meeting.
I'm ready.
We're ready? Okay, I'm, let's see, it's 5:49, so I'm calling the meeting to order.
Roll call. Mayor Hurtado?
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Barron?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer, excuse, City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
Present.
Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members, $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Would it be okay to do the proclamations first and then the others, or did you wanna go back first?
Let's do proclamation.
Proclamations, okay, let's go ahead and do that. So let's go ahead and, number one.
The city council will issue proclamation declaring the month of April 14 through the 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
And this will be read by Councilmember Barron and received by Lisa Bautista. They say you can step forward. Good to see you. Come here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 14 through the 20th, 2024. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services, whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response from police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by the citizens who telephone the Southgate Police Department Communication Center. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activity by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety dispatchers of the Southgate Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals. And whereas the public safety dispatchers have exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of his or her job in the past year. Now therefore be proclaimed on this 26th day of March, 2024, that I Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the city council and the citizens, do hereby declare the week of April 14 through the 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Southgate in honor of our public safety dispatchers who diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed, Gil Hurtado, Mayor.
And as he walks it over to you, you wanna say a few words? And we're gonna have a picture taken, but we're gonna finish all the proclamations first and then we'll get everybody at one shot.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Bautista and I'd like to thank the council for this proclamation. I am the oldest, most senior dispatcher with the department, been on 38 years. Started when I was 12, I always say that. But it is an honor to accept this proclamation. Back when I started, dispatching was a totally different ballgame. Can honestly say it's been an amazing career. I'm not gonna talk just about me, but I will tell you that the city is amazing. I grew up here, so of course it's home. Also very pleased to say that we are at full staff with 10 dispatchers. It's an amazing feeling to know that we do have the extra bodies when needed. Not sure what more else I can say. Is there questions that maybe I can answer from anyone?
Actually, I do have a question for you, Ms. Bautista. Since you started, since you were so young, how would you say the technology has assisted you in your profession, where you started to where we are today?
Oh, technology is amazing. I can remember Thomas Guide era, you know, Thomas Guide, when officers would get in pursuit, we'd had three books and we knew Southgate was 59 and we'd continue to turn to the 70s, 80s, wherever, Orange County. That's definitely technology. We have Google Maps up all the time. I will tell you that there's a technology now with 911. So when I started 911 was not, I think it was answered by CHP and then transferred to us. Then there was a transition where we started getting all 911 calls and 911 bounced off of cell towers. So that was, again, basic 911. Now we have the ability through a company, we have our software, it's Rapid SOS, to ping the person. So they call 911, okay, we'll talk about people that are homeless or unhoused and living on the tracks. I can ping their phone and tell the officer, no, they're across the street, Firestone Radio, but you gotta go east and south a little bit by the tracks and, you know, and I've got the satellite where they're at. And they're like, oh, found the person, thanks, roll paramedics or roll some units. So technology is a blessing.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I add a few things? I do wanna compliment the dispatchers. The job that they have is extremely difficult. I know every time I go on there and the phones start ringing, I get anxiety and I'm not even answering the phones. So I do know it's a difficult job. They are first responders in the very literal sense. Oftentimes, they are the first point of contact for the residents and citizens when they call into the police station. So they, they do a wonderful job. When I reported the crime stats and all the 45,000 calls for service, they get every single one of them. So hats off to them, they do a wonderful job and got a great team and couldn't be prouder of, prouder of everyone in that dispatch center. I was on a conference call today, just trying to get some federal funding for our computer-aided dispatch and records management system, 'cause everything that they put into that system is the brains of our operation and we're 25 years old in that system. So we're in desperate need of some funding for a new computer-aided dispatch center. And we're looking forward to lobbying the right people and getting some, some help. But thank you to the dispatchers and everything they do.
Thank you so much. Yeah, stay tuned. We're gonna do the others first and then we'll get everybody in one, one big group shot. Okay, item number two.
The city council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2024 as Autism Awareness Month.
And I get to do this one. I do have a grandson who's on the spectrum and he's very special and they all are. So let me go ahead and read this, declare, declaring Autism Awareness Month, April 2024. Whereas the month of April has been designated to spread awareness about autism acceptance and promote inclusion and connectedness for people with autism. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a complex developmental disability that affects differently and usually appears by age two or three. Whereas ASD refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social, emotional, communication, and motor skills, repetitive behavior, speech, nonverbal communication, sensory sensitivities, and difficulty with making eye contact. Whereas the color blue symbolizes support for individuals on the autism spectrum and their families. Whereas the autism symbol for 2024, an autistic pride day, is represented by the rainbow infinity symbol intended to represent the diversity of autistic people and the infinite possibilities and variations within the autism community. Whereas a person with autism can have a distinct set of strengths and challenges in which they learn, think, and problem solve. People with ASD may require significant assistance in their daily lives, while others may require less and in some cases live entirely independent without assistance. Whereas although there is no cure for autism, research reveals that high-quality early intervention can improve learning, communication, and social skills as well as underlying brain development. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 26th day of March, 2024, that I Gil Hurtado, the mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the city council and citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Autism Awareness Month and encourage residents to become aware of autism indicators, seek early intervention, and support those living with autism. And receiving this is Lieutenant Sergio Camacho with a special guest there as well.
Sorry, I didn't, wasn't sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to extend a, a very heartfelt thank you to you for this proclamation. I brought my daughter Vivian with me. Vivian is on the.
Um, Vivian is on the autism spectrum and, uh, she just recently turned, uh, eighteen and she'll be graduating high school this year. Um, bear, bear with me, I don't want to get emotional. I'm supposed to be this, this tough police officer and I'm about to cry in front of you all. Um, but, um, I might have shared this story before, but I remember one time Vivian and I were having a deep conversation over coffee or pastries or something, uh, one of our favorite things to do together. And I remember she asked me, um, she got this real serious look on her face and I knew, oh, oh, something's, something's coming, she's going to drop a bomb on me. And she says, um, she says, Dad, if you could, would you cure my autism? And I looked at her and I asked, I answered her question with the question, I said, would you, baby? And she looked at me and she said, no, Dad. And I said, me neither. Um, and that was all that needed to be said. And, um, she is my pride and joy. Um, she is my hero, love of my life. And, um, she is why, um, several years back, I approached then Chief Randy Davis and Captain Aroawa and asked if we could plan an autism event, if we could, uh, create an autism awareness patch. Um, it was not only for Vivian, but it was for every child in this community, um, who unfortunately, a lot of these kids go undiagnosed and underserved. And so the purpose of the autism awareness event was to partner with the regional center and some of our nonprofits to bring our community members in, educate them on what autism is and how they can go about getting their children diagnosed if they suspect that their child may be on the spectrum. Um, I can tell you that by getting Vivian diagnosed and getting her services, that's definitely contributed to the fact that she's going to be graduating high school. Um, she gets great grades, uh, she's been in the theater all four years of high school and the last two years of junior high school, has had a part in every play that, uh, she's auditioned for. And, um, that success is not only a testament to, to her mother's commitment to her and, and mine to maybe a lesser degree, but to the services that she's receiving, the attention that, that she was able to get because we, we diagnosed her early on. So, um, with that said, I'm going to give a, a shameless plug for, uh, this year's autism event, which will be Sunday, April fourteenth, uh, from eleven to two at, at our own auditorium. Uh, we decided to have it indoor so that the elements wouldn't be an issue, but the regional center will be there. We're going to have, um, some of our, uh, canines from, uh, from neighboring agencies. Um, they're not the ones that go out and get bad guys, but, but they are the cute ones that, that go to the community events for stuff like this. We're going to have music, we're going to have a photo booth, um, we're going to have some giveaways. So, uh, if you have time, please come out and, um, I would love to see you guys there. And also, um, as, uh, Mayor Hurtado mentioned in the proclamation, this is, um, this year's autism patch. So I, I brought a patch. I don't know if I brought enough for everyone, but I certainly brought enough, uh, for the council. Those are for, are those are for you guys? Please, um, put them somewhere prominent in your office or somewhere or slap it on the windshield of your car and drive around with it all April or something. But, um, again, I don't want to take up any more time, I know I've rambled on, but thank you so much from the bottom of my heart and, and Viv would just like to say a couple quick things.
I just like to thank you all for this proclamation. It's an honor, especially as someone who is on the spectrum. After all, how often do you get to receive a proclamation like this? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, and we're going to take pictures shortly and so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you have a second? Sir, do you want to bring Vivian up here? I got her something. I just did, I do want to mention that the autism event was created by Lieutenant Camacho and it's a, it's a now part of the tradition of our organization. Uh, but I'm proud of Vivian, she came up and did a, a speech at the last autism event, but, uh, very proud of her and very proud that Sergio's part of this organization because he, that just shows the kind of man he is. And I got some flowers for Vivian.
Yes, they are very special. I can tell you, uh, being that my grandson is on the spectrum and, uh, yeah, I wouldn't want him any other way. He's an amazing little fella. Okay, uh, item number three.
The city council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty four as National Library Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have the pleasure of, uh, declaring National Library Week, April seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And I see some young people here, I'm sure they go to the, visit the library, right? And I know Amy Lewis here from the library, so, uh, let me read the proclamation. Um, declaring National Library Week. And I'm very fond of it because I think some of our students are not reading as much and I think the library supports reading, so anyways, okay, let's go on. Whereas in the beginning in nineteen fifty-eight, the National Library Week was sponsored by the American Library Association and, and observed by all types of libraries across the country each April. Whereas in mid, in the mid-fifties, research showed that Americans were spending less on books and more on radios, televisions, and musical instruments. So concerned that the Americans, that Americans were reading less, the American Library Association and the American book associates publishers formed a nonprofit citizens organization called the National Book Committee in nineteen fifty-four. Whereas the committee's goals were to encourage people to read in their increasing leisure time, to improving incomes and health, and developing strong, happy family life. Whereas with the cooperation, American Library Association, and with the help from advertising council, and the first National Library Week was observed in nineteen fifty-eight with the theme, wake up and read. Whereas National Library Week is a time to celebrate our nation's libraries, library workers, contrib- contributions, and promote library use and support. Whereas the theme for National Library Week twenty twenty four, Ready, Set, Library, promotes the idea that in our always online world, libraries give us a green light to something truly special, a place to connect with others, learn new skills, and focus on what matters most. Whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensures equity of access for all. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this twenty-sixth day of March, twenty twenty four, that I Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the council, city council and citizens, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and encourage all residents to connect with the library by visiting online and in-person to access resources and service. Mayor Gil Hurtado.
All right. You ate me again. Do you want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to express my continued gratitude at, um, the council's support of the library over the years. Mayor Hurtado has used our quiet room and study room. Um, you know, we've done research for, uh, city treasurer. We've, we've given you so much and you continue to support and give back as well. So we, but on behalf of everybody at the Lea Library and, uh, the Hollydale Library, Julie could not be here tonight, um, just want to thank you once again for this proclamation.
Yes. And, and I actually do go in there and read, by the way, I didn't just look at the pictures, okay? Okay, let's do a picture with all the people. Yeah, all, all together. Because there was one left over, right? Yeah. Your, the.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you got it? Wait. Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, for Jose, for good old, what's his name? Okay, so, um, Jose De La Paz, I don't know. Okay, so, item number four.
The city council will consider receiving and filing the list of new and promoted full-time employees hired or promoted during February twenty twenty four.
Okay, who's taking this? John, is that you? Any employees?
It is. Good evening. So we have three employees to introduce to you. And first up is an employee with Parks and Recreation, followed by Public Works.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, Daniel Gonzalez is a Boomerang employee. Started with Hub Cities here at the park, came in, got a full-time job as a grounds maintenance worker, and then he wanted to go out and try to realize his dream of opening his own auto mechanic shop. He did that, left us for a few years, and like a Boomerang, when COVID hit and the auto industry had issues and stuff like that, he came back as an hourly employee and then just recently got the job again to become a full-time employee. So he is my Boomerang Employee of the Year. He knows a lot, he knew a lot then, knows a lot now, and it's great to have him back on staff because it's not like we got to train him, he, he knew it from before, it's just, he left us for a little while and has now come back and is back in a full-time capacity as the grounds maintenance worker.
Excellent. He's not here, right?
He's not here.
Okay, all right, well, welcome him aboard. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. I don't have Boomerang workers, but I have the kind of workers that stick around and don't leave. And this particular one, I'd like to say, oh, Lord, I'd like to say that Mr. Roy Osagada, somebody, somebody that I'm really pleased to see have had a recent opportunity to promote twice. He was hired on as, uh, as an hourly worker in two thousand seventeen and he stuck out in that position looking for opportunity for many years to promote. He didn't get to promote until December of twenty twenty-three, just five months ago. And then recently he promoted again to a lead electrician position, which is several positions up. And he's very well deserving of the opportunity. Comes to us, or he's here with fifteen years of experience. He's, uh, well qualified with road lighting, traffic signal, work his own safety, et cetera, certifications, and, you know, like every other electrician, he'll be helping address our needs in our electrical infrastructure, like our streetlights and our traffic signals. And his free time he spends, um, he enjoys spending time with his wife and four children and volunteers as a coach for his children's athletic teams. So please help me welcome and congratulate, actually, Mr. Roy Osagada. And he's not here with us tonight. The next gentleman is new to the city. I'm pleased to introduce Julian Bowen. He was hired as an electrician one in January of twenty twenty four. He was also assigned to the electrical division to perform maintenance on our electrical infrastructure. He, um, he's new to, uh, as an electrician, he holds an associate's degree in Los Angeles Trade Tech College in Electrical Construction and Maintenance. In his free time, Julian enjoys drawing, history, and collecting comic books, so please help me welcome Julian.
Well, welcome to all of them, and I'm sure they're going to fit right in. We meet our employees and hopefully we can retain them. Steve, I don't know that Boomerang stuff anymore. Okay, uh, let's see, I think that's it, right? Motion, uh, I want to turn the motion to adjourn.
Close session.
Um, close session, sir.
Oh, close session, that's right. I forgot about you, um, sorry. Okay, close session, you want to meet those in?
Item number one, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine A, five four nine five four point nine B three C, A Maria Fernandez versus City of Southgate et al. Item number two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine C, one potential case.
Thank you. Let me open this up to the audience. Anybody wishing to speak on these items, please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion and we shall return shortly.
Okay. Hey, I know you. Good to see you. Okay, well, we ready? Okay, so we're back from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, if you don't mind giving a little bit of a recap.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to have a closed session discussion to discuss one case pending litigation, Maria Fernandez versus the City of Southgate. This is a claim where Ms. Fernandez claims that she slipped on a city sidewalk. City received a report by the City Attorney with respect to that case, and upon completion of that report, there was a motion made by Mayor Hurtado, seconded by Councilwoman Avalos, and a vote of five to zero, the council authorized the City Attorney to defend the matter. Item number two, conference legal counsel, anticipated litigation. There's a presentation made jointly by the City Manager and by the City Attorney with respect to that matter, and upon completion of that presentation, there is no reportable action taken. There are no further items discussed in closed session. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you very much. Let me open up to the audience, anybody in the audience wishing to speak on the items that the City Attorney addressed. Welcome to step forward. Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close that portion. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Okay, say when we're ready. All right, Jasmine. Ready? Okay, so it is 6:51, so I'm going to start the regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024. We have the invocation by Bishop Ismael Martín del Campo. I love that name, by the way. And then the Pledge of Allegiance by Yody Glaze, please stand.
Okay. When I start this, good afternoon. Greetings from the Apostolic Assembly. We are the oldest Hispanic religious organization in California. It's a privilege to serve many, many communities in California, and I would like to express that we have a new situation among our churches. We are performing more funerals for fentanyl overdose. We are very concerned. And also, I would say, some new cases of people passing away from cancer because of the lack of appropriate medical attention from HMOs. So I'm expressing my concern with you because this can be a vatrain, and I hope we can do altogether something, you know, to change this situation. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for Mayor Ahil Hurtado and the City Council members, Maria Dávila, Maria del Pilar Avalos, Al Ríos, and Joshua Barrón. We thank you for their staff and all that they do. Father, we thank you for the City of Southgate and each family that lives here. Today, we ask that you would give them your wisdom, your spirit, and your word, that they may better serve your people here. Father, as the city encourage business and development, may they also in like manner encourage the life and wellness of families, affordable housing for too many have been left homeless, and greater assistance to those who live out on the street or in their cars. We pray all these things in your name, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you. Gentlemen.
If you could please join me in the pledge. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dávila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barrón.
Present.
Councilmember Ríos.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz is excused. City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
So we don't have a public hearing, let's go ahead and...
Meeting compensation disclosure. Presenting government code section 549, 52.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by City Council members to $790 monthly, regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you, and Deena's making funny faces at me, so if you don't mind...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just announcement for the Spanish translations. Si hay personas que necesitan traducción en español, tenemos audífonos si ocupan traducción en español. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was jumping ahead of schedule there, so... Okay, we're going to go ahead and open it up to comments from the audience. Anybody in the audience? I'm sorry we had you waiting all this time, but here we go.
It's a pleasure to wait.
You can pull that down, there you go.
Hello again, Council. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to announce a few things coming from the library this upcoming month. This week, on Saturday, we have a very special author coming to speak to us. She's a prominent writer of about the history of the Sela area. She's written a few books featuring Southgate, and her newest book is called The New Suburbia: How Diversity Remade Suburban Life in Los Angeles After 1945. So she's going to be at the library this Saturday. I have a packet here for each council member with some of the things that we have coming up. But I did want to also mention that the Weaver Library, the one on Tweedy Boulevard, is a Narcan giveaway center. We have Narcan clinics that any member of the public is welcome to come in. We need you to watch a short instructional video just so you know how to use it, but it's free for any community member. No restriction, no healthcare information taken. We didn't even ask you for your name. We just asked that you watch a short video so that you know how to use it. Anyone is welcome to come. I invite you all to stock your first aid kits and make sure that you have that on hand, as we know the fentanyl crisis is rising. We want to make sure that everyone is prepared. That's all I have. If I can pass this over to Council, just a packet each for Council, and I do have extra flyers of our events that if I may leave it at the agenda table for anyone else who's interested to grab, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, the City Clerk can take those.
Great. And that's everything I have, unless Council has questions about anything going on at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, you're doing a great job out there for us. Next speaker? Okay, seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a public comment that I received via email.
Okay.
This comment is from Claudia Rivera, and this is to the City Manager. She's hoping that she's able to ask a couple of questions for you to answer. Number one, does the City of Southgate have $14 million in deficit? And number two, do we have the highest taxes in the state? Thank you.
Okay, so I'll wait till the end for you. We're going to go to the others first. Okay, Mr. Cervantes, you're up to bat first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask the City Clerk to put up the PowerPoint presentation on my brief CIP update, as you know, where there's a new format. So today I'll be highlighting three particular projects, two of which I want to highlight the improvements that the city is making to the water system as there's been some concerns and some complaints when issues exist, and some of those led to an implementation of an annual mainline replacement project. And I wanted to mention that the water main replacement project is one that is going to start construction in April. The purpose of this project is to improve water quality and system reliability. As part of the project, we're going to replace water mainlines, water service ladles, and water meters on the streets that you see up here. Construction will take six months to complete from April to... I don't think I... Yeah, I did have to do the math right. So it's about six months. So it's about six months to complete there. Next slide, please. So this is another one, a multimillion dollar construction project that is currently underway. The water system has multiple water production sites. This is the Hawkins reservoir site where we have two large water reservoirs. The water reservoirs are being repaired or rehabilitated to improve system reliability. Those are important, particularly during an emergency. We're, as part of the project, we're recording the reservoirs. We're also seismically upgrading those, replacing piping and replacing perimeter fencing. So construction is nearing completion. It'll be completed in May. Next slide, please. And the last project to highlight is the I-710 Freeway Firestone Boulevard Southbound Onramp realignment project. This is a project that's been underway for quite some time, and it's being constructed in two phases. Phase one is complete, phase two is under design. Purpose of this project is to reduce congestion, improve pedestrian bike and vehicle safety, and improve traffic circulation. We're doing that through improvements that include mainly on the second phase is realigning the southbound Enramp and then converting to a permanent eastbound dedicated lane to the Onramp. We're also installing landscape medians and sidewalks right now. Crossing the bridge area by pedestrians is an issue, and so we're installing sidewalks. So we're pleased to report that design is scheduled to be completed shortly in April. After that, it will just be a waiting game with Caltrans in terms of being able to get approval to start construction. But if all goes well, we're hoping to start construction in very early 2025. And that concludes my report.
Okay, and before you go on, one question. A lot of times people will say, hey, we heard the construction start date. When will it finish? And that's one of the questions I don't know if you can answer, but I hear that from the folks by Garfield, the work that's been done there, Long Beach Boulevard, and I believe we're gonna start the Tweedy Mile Street Improvement Project, right, the resurfacing, and that's gonna be after the street fair. But when will it be completed? Those are the questions that you don't have to tell us today, but maybe at some future. You can if you know.
On this particular project that is here, we don't have a completion date because we don't know when we're going to start. So at this point in time, I'm hesitant to provide a completion date, but as soon as we know, we have a former schedule, we can advise. We do know that if all goes well with Caltrans approval, we're very likely to start construction in very early 2025, and it'll take more than a year to complete construction.
Yeah, and it's not like I want to get into a lot of stuff on this, right? But people are asking me, when is the Hollidale Park gonna be finished? I know you started it. When is the playground gonna be finished at Southgate Park? When is Garfield gonna be finished? So again, I'm sure I'm not the only one who gets these questions, but maybe at some point you can update on...
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Costley.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. We had a very busy weekend at the park, as we typically do. I have to bring a big shout out to my staff, as you guys are well aware, that we had our Easter egg hunt on Saturday, but on Friday, the weather said it's gonna rain. And so they took that time from Friday afternoon to Saturday morning at 9:00 AM to reconfigure the whole thing and move it from a golf course into the gym. It turned out beautiful.
Yes.
They did a great job in there in relocating the whole thing. It's a lot of work. Secondary shout out to Special Olympics. They were meeting that day in the gym to do coaches training, and they worked with us. We switched them around to different areas, so we were able to accommodate the Special Olympics training along with the Easter egg hunt, all at the park at the same time. People moved around a lot, but with the help of, you know, flyers, posters, and people, we got everyone to where they belonged. We had almost all 350 of our kids show up for the Easter egg hunt, and we heard from outside sources that a number of other cities canceled their Easter egg hunt because...
Well, not other cities, though, right? Where's Southgate?
Right, and so we filled up the gym because it's not just 350 kids, it's 350 kids and their parents who all show up for this, and council members who take up a little space too, you know? Oops. And so it was a good day there. They had a lot of happy kids, and a lot of things went on with that. And then after all that fun, we put on the Miss Southgate pageant at the park, another good activity and program. We have seven young ladies who veered for the title of Miss Southgate. We had one winner, one princess, and one runner-up. Now, I don't have the names for you. I'm sure someone here does, but I don't off the top of my head. We will recognize them at the second meeting in April. We'll bring in the new court and recognize the old court. So all that's taking place. And then to answer one of the other questions, the playground project is ongoing. They laid what's called the cap on it today, which is the color coat for the playground. It will take three days to cure, and then we should be able to take down the fences and open the playground on Saturday, which was our initial goal, to have it open before Easter. And so right now, as long as we get the three days of curing in before the rain starts on Friday night, Saturday, we should be able to pull the fences down and have the playground back in full operation by the weekend or by Monday at the latest.
And by the way, all the contestants were winners. They were all fantastic. And it was a very difficult time in the scoring because I was brought backstage to take a look at the scores, and there were numerous very close, they were tied, a lot of them were tied, but they were all winners. And I was gonna ask him to talk about Miss Salita, but I'll let you do that. You kicked me under the table here to let me know, so I'll make sure we're safe. Okay, I'm sorry, it's unsafe back here for me. Meredith.
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Good evening. For the LIWAP, we had, we met last Thursday. There was 40 applications, 20 of them were approved, and 17 were pending. I got an email from Long Beach Community Action Partnership today, and so they have exhausted all of their funds. So these 17 that are pending just want the public to know that get your paperwork in, so you're already, the pledge is already out there for you, but I don't want it to go on to someone, another resident. So that was a big success, and they were very appreciative of our participation. Also, I can answer the question for the $14 million deficit and the tax. As far as the highest tax in the state was a question that the e-comment was raising. For our property taxes, we're one of the lowest. We receive 6.15% in property taxes. Other cities are receiving 13%, 11%, 9% and upward. Also, sales taxes on par with other cities, we're at 10.25%, which is very comparable to quite a few cities, Gardena, Carson, Montebello, Whittier, and Bellflower, just to name a few.
I have the whole list. There's about 47 cities. And I keep on saying that because I keep on hearing that nonsense, and I am glad that you have that. But yeah, there's 46. In fact, BAO just joined that list. They had a ballot measure, and they just reached the 10.25.
And the last notable difference I would point out is, and we've talked about this before, is the UUT, the Utility User Tax, which the City of Southgate does not impose on its residents. And so that would be the extra tax that would be applied to utility bills like water, electricity, gas, cable, internet, those type of services that we do not impose. So we are, in fact, not one of the highest, but one of the lowest as far as state imposed tax.
Can I ask you a question? Given the fact that Southgate doesn't charge for the utility taxes, which surrounding cities do charge, and what is their revenue that we're not getting?
Yeah, so that revenue that we are not realizing, let's say, Pico Rivera, they're receiving about 4.17 million. Paramount is in the 4 million, 4.7. Downey is 8.7 million. And if I just, you know, use like comparable populations as well, Downey has 109, we have 90,000, so they're receiving 8.7 million.
And in case anybody wants to see these numbers, I've done my research, and I have a whole list of all these cities that have it. We're at zero. I'm not gonna go through the whole list. Oh, Hambra's at 5%, Arcadia 7%, Abala's at 10% Utility Users Tax, so they have a 10.25 plus 10% on top of that. Bellflower 5%, Burbank 7%, Compton 10%, Covina 6%, Cudahoga 8%, Culver City 11%. I can go on and on and on and on. So we are not the highest in taxing people regardless of what some people want to say on social media. Somehow the word hogwash comes to mind, so...
I would, because I see the city attorney looking at us over here, but I, just so we can really explain Utility Users Tax to our residents, because we don't have it, so we don't know what it is, can you give us an example of what that would be like on a bill? You know, what, like, you gave the example, like, they added something to your cable bill. So a good example would be like if Spectrum charges $39.99 in the City of Southgate, my bill is $39.99, because that's what the bill is. In a different city, it would be $39.99 plus whatever their Utility Users Tax percentage is.
That is correct. I don't, I can't quantify it, but yes, that is correct.
That's all I wanted to kind of explain a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time and diplomacy, may we move forward?
Yes, since you bought me lunch today, I guess I'll move along. I'm just kidding, he didn't buy me lunch. He owes me one, though. John, without an H, you're up. Are you done, Wendy?
I was just gonna answer the deficit question.
Okay.
Okay. So just the word deficit, I like to term it more of a budget deficit. The budget is the planning tool document that we use to kind of project the revenues and the expenditures for the fiscal year. So the comment was, do we, does the City of Southgate have a $14 million deficit? So the best way I can respond to that is that we do a five-year financial forecast. This forecast is a tool that we use to project and to look into the future and to see exactly where the city would be landing in five years, one year, two years, three years, four years, five years out, so we can anticipate what changes that we need to make, whether it's more revenue, you know, save on expenditures, whatever, you know, decisions that we make as a body. So just to give a little bit of insight, one, those, the five-year financial report is not about actuals, it is about the projections. And then I'll kind of explain it later on tonight in the mid-year report, but for example, the future financial forecasts that I'll be working on will increase projections of revenues based on the sewer rate. So I'll be able to add those in, so that $14 million, just to quantify it for you, doing what we did a couple of months ago or weeks ago for the sewer fund and adopting that increase, and then also taking a look at the street lighting fund deficit. Just those two alone can bring down that to 14 million to 6.8 million. Again, we're talking about the year 2027, 28, somewhere about there. And then that would leave in the general fund about a $2 million deficit, which is something that we could manage. $2 million is something that we would be able to manage annually. So again, it's just forecasting, looking into the future of how the city would land, and then making those adjustments based on those forecasted numbers. So it's not a deficit, it's more of this budget shortfall.
If we didn't do anything, this is where we would be. Because tonight, you're gonna be talking a little bit about the, this year's fund and what we have and how we are actually doing much better this year alone than what we projected.
And expected, yes.
And it's because of the projection. And just to put a final touch on that, the sewer rate, the reason it went up, it wasn't to balance books, it was to do what needed to be done because we had not adjusted the sewer rate since 2010. It's been 14 years. And the Street Light and Landscaping Fund hasn't changed since before, since the 1990s. And so if we don't address those issues, it'll create a problem. But anyhow, thank you. We'll go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, John, without an H, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, I wanted to let the council and everybody know about some exciting positions that we have available. First, some brand-new positions that were just posted in our Community Development Department and our Planning Division. We have some for all levels of planners, assistant planner, associate planner, and senior planner. So we're excited that we have this opportunity to go out and find some great people to fill those positions. In administrative services, we're looking for a senior accountant or an accountant. Parks and Recreation, a community services officer, a park ranger. What this position is, full-time position. We're looking for two part-time positions, a lifeguard and a recreation leader to your grounds maintenance individual. In the Police Department, always looking for great men and women to fill the ranks as police officers. For those that come on as a new police officer, a police recruit even, $15,000 signing bonus. And for our laterals coming from other agencies to join the ranks of our men and women in tan and green, it's $20,000 of a signing bonus. And last but not least, in Public Works, we have a position available for an engineering technician and a journey electrician. So just go to cityofsouthgate.org, there's a tab called Jobs. Find the job that best suits you and apply for it today. Thank you.
Chief, you're up to bat.
Just wanted to let you know that we are scheduling a coffee with a cop that will be either the 17th of April or the 18th at the Starbucks at Garfield and Firestone from 5 o'clock to 7:00. We're just working out one of those two dates for sure. We're gonna actually unveil the off-road vehicle that we received. It's now getting decals put on. I want to show it to the public to give them an idea of where it's gonna be deployed, and nice little piece of equipment that will be able, that you'll start seeing in the future. So that will be the 18th, and we'll also be selling our autism awareness patches. So we will send out a social media post and post it on the city side as well. And the last thing is, the Police Department made it back alive from Las Vegas. There were 258 teams that competed this year from nine different states, including the United States and Canada. And there were 5,200 runners, about 20,000 volunteers. We ran our 120 miles in 17 hours and 40 minutes. It pales in comparison to the team from New York. New York sends a team every two years. To give you an idea of how fast these guys are, we ran it in 17 hours and 40 minutes. They ran theirs in 12 hours and 19 minutes and 43 seconds. So very impressive. It's really nice to have a team from New York come out. They always compete at the high level. There was one year, a team from Belize came down. It's like their international team. When they send the team from Belize, it's like the Olympics for them. They'll probably come back next year because a lot of those countries will alternate years, but it was a really good race, good for team building, it's good for wellness, and an opportunity for the team captains to get out there and put this together. And at the next council meeting, we're hoping that we can get some recognition for them. We'll bring the team captains here. But it was our 27th year, and it was just a phenomenal event. It's just a lot of fun, and we're thankful for you allowing us to go out there and have fun and represent Southgate, and that's all I have.
John, you said something about police recruitment. Can we put one other requirement, long-distance runners wanted?
I was gonna sub 5:00 or 4:30. We have a lot, we'll bring them to you.
Okay, good. We're trying to get you a winner there.
As long as we can get somebody to replace me, because I'm an old guy running, I have no business. Two steps into it, every year I always ask myself, why am I even running this thing? But I didn't get airlifted, and I finished my leg.
I asked, because I saw a photo of you, I asked, why is he wearing a tie? No, that's his tongue. I'm sorry, I got confused. Anyhow, it was a... Rob, you're up.
I think we had some great summaries from the department heads I'll pass forward today. I do have something to, item later in the agenda, which I'll speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salinas.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
I have not much, just to encourage the public and our residents to attend our meetings in person. I also, if they cannot come in person, if they can participate via email, if they can email me at yglaze@southgate.org, no later than 4:00 the same day. And then I would read in a summary your email. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to congratulate our police officers that participated in Vegas, Baker to Vegas, and I know it was, hopefully it wasn't too cold and it wasn't too hot. The weather was just right. So, you know, congratulate all of them, and thank you for what you do, you know, for our police department, but more importantly, for the community. Definitely want to acknowledge, you know, the loss that the pastor spoke to about earlier is that we are having a lot more residents pass away of sometimes natural causes of cancer, but also of complications with COVID. A lot of heart attacks, a lot of aneurysms are happening. And just to be mindful, COVID is still out. And just to be mindful, COVID is still out there. Try to keep yourself healthy and safe. I wasn't able to make it to the Easter egg hunt this year. Unfortunately, I had to work on a Saturday, but I heard a lot of good stories from a lot of the neighbors that were able to attend. And thank you to my colleagues that were there. Again, we can't be everywhere, but we spread the wealth. I attended the vector control meeting in March, very interesting. Again, the rains are here, so remember that if you have any standing water, tip it over, empty out your pots, your plants, any excess water, because that is a breeding ground for a lot of the mosquitoes that we have in our area, and unfortunately, carry a lot of these really bad diseases that we're now currently seeing in LA County, like malaria, dengue, West Nile virus. Again, we have to do what we can within our own homes, within our own communities, so that we don't get these illnesses. Because when they hit us, I've heard that it gets really, really bad for individuals, some of them, it will cost them their lives. So, please, be mindful and empty out a lot of that standing water that you have around the home, or if you see it out in the street, dump it out, because you just never know. And I want to wish everybody a nice, happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, I would, again, just like to thank the Parks and Rec staff. I was there at the Easter Egg Fest, and the amount of work that it must have taken to put that indoors, the balloon arrangements that were made were great. The kids had a blast, the families were taking photos at every single location. And the Easter Egg Hunt, if you want to know how long it takes three- to five-year-olds to pick up all the eggs that are put out there, it was less than a minute. I mean, the kid, the, the Parks and Rec staff said, go. A minute later, they were inside in the, in the dry, so really great event.
You weren't supposed to participate, by the way.
Well, I tried, I tried, I tried. But a really great event, great job by the park staff. Just please tell them that it was great to see that take place. Also, as some of you may know, I'm the charter president for our SEALA coawanus. And one of the ideas that came about in our last meeting was something that we can provide for our region, for the youth in our communities, and we're currently working on doing a SEALA College Fair. We have partnered up with Anthony Rendon's office, Lena Gonzalez's office, we're reaching out also to Nanette Bergen's office to, to try to partner up with that. Our goal is, we have some neighboring school districts that do a really good job at schools, they do a really good job of attracting these colleges to come. The Downey, where, where my daughters go to Warren High School, last year had 150 colleges show up. Our goal is to be able to do the same here and be able to provide this access to our kids in SEALA, to be able to see the possibilities of what schools are out there. Some schools that you probably never even heard of, that have your degree and have options out there and are looking for students. We're also going to invite our, of course, our community colleges, our local community colleges, our military branches, and also our trade techs and our unions to be there. Because I think that's, there's a group of students out there that maybe they don't want to go to college, maybe they know what they, they want to be an electrician, they want to be a carpenter, they want to be a mechanic, and there's these trades available. So, really looking forward to do that. We're still trying to decide on the date, it will be in the September month, trying to figure out when, where we will have it, the location, but more to come on that. Just really excited about it, so I wanted to be able to share a little piece of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vios?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank the public for being here and doing your civic duty. I have a couple of things. The CEO of Community Foundation, Eddie Tafoya, called me, and he was so excited, he just got another grant for tutoring our kids, and, and he's already a potential vendor. And I want to thank this council, because we, you know, it's some president, this council never gave money to, you know, our schools to help tutor, at least that I know, I'm aware of. And for the first time, we provided tutoring money. We wanted LA Unified to kind of, to match that funding. We, I think we gave 150 the first time, then the second year, 200,000. And while they already surpassed that amount, and they're already, already assisting our kids, so they doubled, they leveraged that dollar, and they're, and like I said, they're going to be also, they're in the, in the loop for some more funding, and they're going to operate here. They want to put it back in here, because we were the city that championed it first, even before Huntington Park. So, so it's exciting, on the 17th, they're going to have an event, a reception, they're going to invite all the council. And so, I just wanted to make you aware. And so, our kids are going to do, do better in school and have better careers, because if you start early, it makes a difference, man, it makes a lot of difference. So, I'm really excited about that. And he's going to be coming back and, and presenting on that. So, and then the other thing is, you know, I live off of Tweedy Arturo, and I noticed, is that you guys already synchronized the lights, because the lights are taking longer, and let me finish, they're taking longer to turn off of orange to, whether, you know, turning left, and I, and I'm noticing even today, it's hard to even get there, because cars are backing up now, and it's kind of like creating a situation where I can't even, people can't turn. So, give me some updates on what's going on with the synchronization of the lights, yeah?
Yeah, so the Tweedy, the Tweedy synchronization project has been completed, and I want to share two things. The synchronization project in its totality was beyond our budget, so not all of Tweedy Boulevard was synchronized with this particular project. The project is substantially complete and they're working on the punch list. I don't know if the actual synchronization has been fully programmed and is ready to go, but I will say that in synchronization, you have competing interests in terms of travel. So, look at the time of day that you're traveling, it depends on how you're traveling, the, what is synchronized may not be favoring you if you're going in a different direction. So, the idea is to move a large volume of vehicles through in the shortest time possible. But I will provide another update at the next council meeting in terms of where we're at with that project.
Yeah, I know, I notice it's taking a little longer, and I notice, because I'm waiting, I'm usually in a hurry, and I'm more than saying, but that's, that's part of, and I notice the traffic's moving faster on that, on Tweedy, so. Okay, just, thank you. And then one more thing, and this is my, you know, I noticed right here on Hildreth, two of the big trees were cut down and by the park, and I know I brought this up, and I know some, some of my colleagues are in favor in knocking some of the trees. I'm, I'm a tree guy, I'll hug trees. I mean, I, I think they, it's important that trees, I mean, that's our canopy, that's our, helps us with our air quality and everything. And I know the replacements are not that tree. I mean, they're trees, but they don't grow leaves and, but they don't have shade, I mean, and so, I'm a little worried about how aggressive we're going, because I seen it on Long Beach a month or two, a couple of months ago, and now I'm seeing it right under a park, I see the one right off of Tweedy, and I'm saying, that's what, it's, that boosts, if you look at well-to-do communities, that's what makes a community, the trees. And I know we have a special contract to cut trees, but I want an update of how many more trees they're going to cut in this community. I mean, you know, I, if it's about sidewalks, some of it, I mean, it just seems that we're too aggressive. I, I want to know what, how many trees we're going to continue to cut, you know? I'm concerned.
Yeah, I can provide an update at our next council meeting as well. I will say that there are two tree maintenance programs that we're working on. One of them is just our grid trimming, which work has been completed. The second was based on an assessment of the top 1,200 trees that may present the highest risk and liability. You may recall that, and some years ago, when it would rain or there were winds, we had numerous trees down, numerous large trees down. They would fall on homes, they would fall on cars, and they would crush them, and ultimately, there were problems. So, we engaged in that aggressive program to remove the highest-risk trees only. Yes, so there was about 1,000 identified, I can't recall the exact number, but I will tell you that the majority has been completed. I will tell you that there's one more phase of that to be completed, but I'll report on that next. I do also want to bring attention to what's not happening. In the recent rains, we've just not seen the same level of trees fall as we've seen in the past. In the past, in one event, we had sometimes dozens of large branches, trees would have fallen. We're just not seeing the same thing because of the mitigation measures that we put in place. But I will provide a report on how many more we have left.
Mr. Mayor, I would just, if I could, just ask that, you know, in our conversations with all of our council members, I think we all appreciate our urban forest. I think the one thing that we value the most is the life of the community and the, and the safety of our community. So, as much as I love the tree that was in front of my home, I understood the risk that was associated by it, and I, and I miss it, and I understand that it's a necessity, but I, then I have to think, if my daughters were out there playing on a windy day, what could have happened? So, just to put some insight on that.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quick, as I mentioned before, we had the Women's Conference on the 14, it was a very good turnout, and I want to thank all those who were present, thank you very much. I think it was a very successful event, so I want to thank all of you for participating and being there. It meant a lot to the women who attended the, the conference. One of the other things, I attended the Miss Southgate Pageant, and all I remember the name of the Miss Southgate, it's Barbara Bascus. So, as you mentioned, you're going to bring them here, so they can get introduced and also recognize the outgoing Miss Southgate Accord. Miss Azelita, we decided back when, when we were recruiting for the Miss Azelita contest during the Azalea Fest, we were going to cancel the event, because we didn't have no participation. But we decided not to, but to do it in a different month this time. We are going to be having it, and this will be April 21st this next month, and it's going to be from 1 to 3, and it's going to be at the Girls Clubhouse. We're going to do it different this, this time. We are going to be passing out the, the flyers and encouraging parents at, outside of the schools. We are not going to take any flyers to the schools, because sometimes those flyers don't get, they don't get to the parents. So, what we're going to be doing, we're going to be going to schools and just pass out the flyers to the, to the parent directly, and I, and to see how the outcome will be this type. And this time, we're going to, again, we're going to have the help of the park and also the Chamber of Commerce, it's going to be helping us out that way. So, Miss Azelita Contest, it's, we're having it, it's not going to be canceled, so we are going to be calling the two participants, the two who actually went to the orientation, because we don't want to leave them out, so. So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see. You guys covered just about everything that I have here, but let's start off with what you guys didn't talk about, so the Chick-fil-A. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And, you know, that's funny, because I don't benefit from that, because I don't eat meat. I'm a, huh?
They have salad.
What the, I can get that at home.
Their salad's good.
Yeah, they have mac and cheese and other stuff, but anyhow, yeah, the grand opening of Chick-fil-A. Yes, I went to the Women's Conference, thank you for the invitation. I also attended and helped in the Baker to Vegas fundraiser as well. And I was hoping I could win that raffle. There were two that I was interested in, the coffee one and the one with the vodka. I put more tickets in the vodka thing, and I didn't get that either, but that's okay. And then, yeah, the Miss Southgate event, that was amazing, these young ladies are very talented. And again, I say they're all winners, because for them to go out and compete, stand before an audience and memorize their script, you know, of the person that they were portraying, was amazing. They did a very good job. And with that, I think that'll cover everything. All right, so, we're going on to Consent Calendar?
Consent Calendar items, Agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 are Consent Calendar items.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on these or any one of the items, please step forward. See no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. You know, you are allowed to come up here, right, people, so, okay. All right, let's bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just have one, couple of questions on item number four.
Sure.
From Mr. Costley. So, I know that you're requesting approval of $95,321.25. How many officers do we currently have, and how many more are we going to get, and for which parks?
The answer to that is, we currently have one full-time CSO, park ranger on duty at this time. We are in the process of hiring our second full-time CSO. We got confirmation on Thursday of last week that they had passed their background test, so that will take some time. We will not only hire them, but we have to train them into the process. So, that training will take from when they finally onboard with the city through probably the beginning or middle of June for this month. And then, at this point, we would have one hourly CSO. We are supposed to have four hourly CSOs, but we only have one at this time. And that one was working as the other full-time park ranger at the time. And so, once we fill that position, that ranger will go back down to the hourly ranks. So, we will, by the end of June, have three out of the seven positions filled.
Okay, but this is for?
The sixth position, sorry, make that right.
But this is for security, unarmed security?
Right. Currently, there is not a specific number of security, they fill shifts as needed. And so, we rotate them in, either in a day shift or an evening shift, as we have availability because of the other rangers. So, the, most of our rangers were trying to work at the nighttime, because it's the busier shift, and the executive management security works in the daytime portion of it. And then we fill in from there if they, you know, if we can only fill half of the nighttime slots, we fill the other half with the executive management security staff.
So, how many security officers are currently working? One on a rotating basis, or is it two?
Most days, we have one working on a regular basis. Some weekend days, we, weeknights, we do have two, but not on a regular basis.
Okay. And where, which parks? Which parks?
All the parks.
All the parks.
They rotate, they drive between all the different parks, assisting with not only security at them, but at times when we have to close them. At Hollydale Regional, they go there, they do the removing of anyone left and kicking them all out, and then closing the gates there. And same thing with some of the other side parks like Stanford, they close those and then come back to the main park.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I follow up with that? What other duties, I mean, given that they're, are they doing anything different than the rangers that were there before? And I know this is a, this is a contract that's going to only extend a certain amount more time, right?
Right. Our, our hope is, is that we can complete filling the positions by the end of June 2024. It's the current plan. To cover all of the needed shifts, at this time, we would need all six of the guards in position, right? So, what we will do is, as we get guards in, we will be able to cut down on the hours from the emergency manager, our executive management services. So, this will be a lowering bill as we move through the process, as we obtain more CSO park rangers, so.
So, what can they do, and that's different than, are they enforcing everything, or are they just?
They're enforcing everything across the board. In conversations both with Glenn, in my superintendent, and with Darren, we have seen a significant decrease in issues at the park, a lot less calls for service. They're very professional, very nice, they're, they're on a regular basis doing stuff. But for the council's knowledge, they're, like I just told Councilman Avalos, there is only one or two at any given time. You have to remember, there's 10 parks, almost 200 acres of land, there's places to be, there could be someone causing issues at one end of Southgate Park, and they're on the other end, or they're at Hollydale, or they're at Stanford, or they're on the west side. There's not that many overall bodies that you're going to be able to There's not that many overall bodies that you're going to be able to catch everything. And so they both patrol, but also react when we give them a call to the situation. But they're, it's not going to prevent everything. But their presence, and I can tell you this, and I think I've got the same police presence on this, our concept is that their presence has been felt greatly throughout the park. They know the vehicles now, and a lot of people are, if they haven't stopped the stuff that they're doing, they're at least, you know, knowing when they're coming and trying to hide it better.
Just for the benefit of our residents in the council, their function is to see and report. It's not to enforce anything, right?
Actually, they do have ticketing authority, anything that our normal Park Rangers would have, ticketing of cars illegally parked, alcohol citations, that type of stuff. Anything that goes much beyond that point, they would call in our police department for backup. But they can help us remove skaters who have climbed the fence. They can tell the guys to put away the alcohol, get rid of the alcohol, you know? They can give them tickets for that if they actually catch them drinking. Please note that, as you look at this, the law distinguishes between having it in your hand, that, you can't ticket. You got to see them actually taking the drink.
Right.
And so when they see the car, they're not drinking. So we make them dump it out or throw it away and get it off the park, but, so you don't get the tickets for that as much. But they have done a great job in actually, uh, community engagement so that they can tell the guys, "Look, there's kids 10 feet away from you, you know? Go find somewhere else to do what you're going to do in life." And their presence has been felt greatly.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one more question. This one's for Arturo for item number three. This is for an additional cost for the Firestone Boulevard regional corridor capacity enhancement project. What exactly are we enhancing? I thought that project was complete.
Yeah, the project is complete, the project is, let me just take a step back. The Firestone Corridor project was a multimillion dollar venture that was implemented in two phases. Will then completed the design documents for Phase 1 as well as Phase 2. At the time that they completed the design documents for Phase 2, we bid it out, and the bids came in really high. We asked Will then at that time, which was about a year ago, to redesign the plans, reduce the scope of work so that we can rebid that. They charged us a little over $25,000 to do that, and this is about a year ago. And so, and so the amendment before you is to pay them for that service. Second, as part of the amendment, there's a little bit over $15,000 for the support that they provided through construction support, which means during construction, as a designer, they have to be in the background answering design questions or what have you. Now that the project is complete, we know their cost. So this includes an additional $15,000 for the construction support cost. So this is for services rendered. Right now that we're at the end of the construction of the project, we're not quite there. We're closing out all the payment invoices, correcting all the paperwork, and this was brought to my attention recently, so we're bringing it before council.
So you're talking about the median that is on Firestone from Alameda all the way up to Hunt?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. So this was the second phase. I'm not sure you recall, there was more than, about $2 million left over. So we were able to do some additional things. Like the recent work that you saw is all from this, related to this particular amendment.
Okay, because if you drive down Firestone Boulevard, there are certain sections that are empty. There's no plants, there's no concrete, it's just empty. Was that part of the design?
Do you mean the plants in the median are empty, or do you mean there is no median? I'll take a look at that. I know that as part of this design, we went with a drought tolerant type landscaping, and the whole idea is to not have the medians full of planting like you would over by the Azalea Shopping Center where it's all green and just absolutely full. The idea is to have scattered plants, and a lot of the decomposed granite show through. There's also a few areas where artwork was supposed to be installed that we opted out of at some point in time. And so that area actually has some type of foundation for some future artwork or what have you. So if you're talking about those areas, it may be that. I'll have staff evaluate the medians to see if there's any actual missing landscaping. And then finally, every once in a while, there's a vehicle accident. The vehicle accident takes out the planting, takes out the entrance monuments. So we're in the process of reestablishing that, but I'll have the medians inspected.
No, this was something I had brought to Chris's attention when he was here, and he basically indicated, "Well, that was part of the design." And so I asked to see it, and it was never provided. So that's why I'm asking you if that was done intentionally and what was the purpose? Because it looks really nice, but then you have like patches where there's nothing. It's just concrete. So if you're telling me it was specifically designed for artwork and it never got there...
Yeah, and I can ask you that.
I just feel like let down.
The idea was not to install the artwork as part of this particular project, but when we're ready to install the artwork and we have funding, the infrastructure, the electrical, the concrete, and everything is there. The council changes direction and does, no longer wants artwork. We can certainly go and remove that and put irrigation and some planting. But I'll take a look to see if, in fact, what is there is by design, or it may be design or a car accident or any number of things, and we'll report back.
Yeah, because it's disappointing you're driving, and then all of a sudden you just see this blankness. And I'm like, "What happened here?" So I know I'm not the only one questioning, but...
Understood.
I'm bringing it to you, so hopefully you can let us know, you know, if that was intentional or not, and if it wasn't, so we can remedy it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Item number nine on the mid-year report. You know, we, we're not experts, but we're pretty darn good at reading these reports and understanding. But for anybody in the community who reads these, I want to make sure that we're able to clear this up. On page 16 of the report. Item 9. 16. It has general fund total of 400, ending balance of $478,000 and change. Now, I want to make sure that everybody understands. Can you explain that, Rob? Because that is only, my understanding is that, that is the ending balance of the reserve of the general fund, excuse me, based on what we projected on coming in, in terms of funding and expenditures. And if everything goes as planned, that is like the remainder. Am I basically on the right track there?
I think you're on the right track, Mayor. At a high level, when we're doing a budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll do a forecast of what we think our forecasted expenditures and revenues will be, and then we project an imbalance, which we propose will always be positive. And with that, we had a small balance proposed at the beginning of the fiscal year. And now that we've had a chance for all the revenues and expenditures to settle to this point of the year, we're now reevaluating, we do that every year, every city does, and says, "Based on all the new information we have, what will be our projected balance?" And it's a very positive story where you see, instead of, I think it was around $40,000 projected at the beginning of the fiscal year, we actually show $478,000 projected. And a big part of that was our property taxes, which although we only get 6.2 something percent...
6.5.
There you go, percent, which is very, a small percentage compared to surrounding communities. It still came in much stronger than projected, and so we're happy to see that. We were able to keep all our expenses limited. We have higher revenue, which projects to a better balance. But I do, but Wendy is available for any specific questions at a greater depth. If you'd like anything in that nature, we can provide it.
No, but I do have a follow-up because the general fund, which is the next column, it has an ending overall balance of $28,107. That's, that's the reserve, right? And the reason I bring it up is because I know that it's been said erroneously multiple times that we're going to be losing money by the end of such and such a year. And I think what had happened is that Chris Jeffers kind of sort of moved numbers around a little bit, but the money was still there. He just put them in different categories, and all of us were briefed on it. And so we kind of sort of knew that we had that amount still. But someone could look at that balance at the end, you know, and say, "Oh, look, they lost $19 million", when in reality, if they had just read one more paragraph down, it would have been explained. No, the money is still there, but it's in different categories. And so I just want to make sure that, that when we talk about, you look at that first section, that first part of page 16, and it has a 478 ending general fund balance, that it's, that's only in regards to this year's monies alone, revenue and expenditure, right? And that next column shows how much we actually have in reserve.
That's correct, Mayor. And I do believe, from what I've done, some research to get up to speed of the city's finances in the past and currently, you're exactly right in the sense that there was a larger general fund emergency reserve total, and there were some decisions made to separate them into sub-reserves. But the bottom number, that $28 million, shows that there's significant and strong reserves for the city. There has been no drop, no disappearing amount. The $13 million used to have a larger number there, but since that was broken into subgroups, it looks smaller. $28 million is the number you should be looking at. That's a really healthy reserve for a city the size of Southgate.
Yeah, and that coupled with the fact that we are one of the lowest in taxing people is just a phenomenal thing. And I point that out because if those people who are making comments, they're either doing it deliberately or they just don't understand. And I want to invite them to come in. They're welcome to sit down with you, sit down with Wendy, and you guys can explain it to them before they post things up on social media. That's just, could look alarming, and it's really not. I, you know, I look around our staff, and each one of you are dedicated in providing the services to the best of our ability while keeping the costs down. I mean, you can't ask for any more from our staff. And, you know, personally, I want to thank everybody. And Wendy, thank you for preparing this. It's very well thought out. But again, like I said earlier, we are not experts, but we're pretty darn good at reading this, understanding it. And then if we have any questions, we sit down with you, and you are very good about explaining it. But the people who are listening out there in the community, whether they're listening or just looking at the paperwork, they may freak out and say, "Oh, my God, we only have, what is that, $478,000 in reserve? That's pretty darn scary." Well, it would be, but that's not the number. That's just from this year alone. So anyhow, you had a question?
Thank you, Wendy, for this report, and I think this is important. This is a very important time. I would like to, I have some questions along the road, but if you could, in high level, tell us like this, I mean, just go over like each sheet. I think it's important to us for you to highlight what's important here. You're the budget person, just to tell us so that we're aware as we, you know, start coming to the end of the year, what's important, what to look at. I mean, what are you watching so that you can help us kind of understand some of these forms? I mean, what's important, like the first table here, the general fund, I mean, anything in particular on page 2 that we should know? I mean, that stands out, you know?
Mr. Mayor, just...
Yes.
Question. Could we just pull this item for her to give us a presentation? Because I think it would clarify a lot of misconceptions that you just indicated for the benefit of the community that is not here, but that will see it on Zoom.
Well, yeah, so we're discussing it now. Did you want to pull it for something else? I mean, because we, it's considered pulled now.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm just, just to clarify, you were asking about page 2?
Yeah, just page, tell us what we're looking here, just so that we have a, just an overhead view and what's important here to look at, or if it's pretty standard. I mean, it'd be good for us to know, understand what you're dealing with when you're talking about financing.
Yeah, sure. So Rob kind of gave the high-level overview of this particular table. And if we're looking at the general fund as far as the estimated fund balance, this is a point in time where, at the end of the year, or let's just go back a little bit. When budget is being prepared, budget starts around this time of the year, February through May. May we present to council a proposed budget. So again, we're making these projections and estimations based on revenue that's going to be received, expenditures that are going to be expended, and then we get these ending fund balances. Then we close the fiscal year, June 30th. We go through the independent audit process, and we get our actual fund balances that are ending. So in this case, we budgeted for 2324 in May of last year. We adopted that budget in June of last year. But in December of last year, that's when we finalized our independent audit, and we were able to get those actual ending balances. So we're not looking at estimations at this point in time. We're coming back to you at the mid-year, which is now giving you the beginning, so the ending fund balance for 2023, which now becomes the beginning fund balance for the fiscal year 2324 budget. So that's what we're doing here in this table, is we're showing the estimation, and then in the actual, what actually occurred for the five different funds. So, which was highlighted also on the financial summary that Mayor was talking about for the general funds. We initially were ending at 6.5, or starting with $6.5 million. When we ended the independent audit, we have a beginning fund balance for this fiscal year of $8.2 million. What was the difference? There was property tax revenues that were increased. There's salary savings that are also built into that. But one of our biggest numbers was the difference with property tax revenue. So we saw home sales values rise, the home sales rise themselves, so we are recipients of that tax. So what a lot of residents will see on their property tax bill is, at the top, it will say like a 1% general tax revenue that is not directly paid to the city. We have other agencies that help us run the city, which is LA County Fire, the library. We had a library person here earlier today, LA Unified School District. So that is shared, so that's a weighted 1%. We see the 6.15% of that weighted 1%, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So what we're doing here, to answer your question on table 2, it's all important because we are truing up the numbers and giving the reflection of, when you guys, when we present agenda bills to the council and we're looking for appropriations, this is exactly the balances where we're able to say, "Yes, we have those funds available for this fiscal year," or, "No, we don't want to over-budget, so we don't have those funds available for this fiscal year." So that's what these numbers do, is they true up the actual budget.
And so we're within budget. And then I notice the next page is all this red parentheses. Why is all of those numbers on page 3?
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we skip to that section, can you just give me a reason why we went from, on the enterprise fund, from $23 million to $37 million, ending the actual balance?
Yeah, so I can estimate, I'll defer to Art if I miss any high-level or highlights. But one thing is, I can say from just a billing perspective, we started billing, so we're going to receive more revenue come in. I shouldn't say, excuse me, not started billing, we started collecting on revenue. We restarted the shut-offs, restarted, you know, the water utility payments and putting that sense of urgency that our residents need to pay their water bills. So that's one thing. We started to see some old money come through the door. Also, what happens with the capital improvement projects is, although we think we're going to start a project, it may be delayed for some reason. So those expenditures that we did budget for may have been delayed. So that, again, trues up our ending fund balance of the year 2023, and then it changes the beginning fund balance for '24, or what we have available to spend. Those projects are still being budgeted. We just didn't expense them that year.
Yeah, and if I can add, we budget projects on a multi-year process. So for example, if we have a $5 million project this year that is intended to be completed next year, we budget now because we're going to award a contract and a PO, but we don't actually spend the money. So as the, you know, I think the current CIP might have somewhere in the $15 million range budgeted this year. We're not actually intending to spend it this year. It's multiple years. So there, then you see that balance at the end of a year, which is going to carry over to the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I was just explaining to him some of the things that were explained to me, that when you see the red, it's like having a checking account. You have, you know... know, let's say you have a thousand dollars, and you make a checkout to pay for rent, a checkout to pay for another thing, right? All those would be the red. And at the bottom, you have what's left over. That's the balance. So that's what that is. Those are the expenditures we have.
And I don't mind real quick going briefly over table two. For table two, just starting from the top going to the bottom, it is a reflection of our general fund monies. And so in the red, you're going to see things that are being requested, or these are the expenditures. So that's, again, what Mayor summarized is in the red. But from the top down is the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted ending fund balance. So if you were to look back online at the budget that we posted that was adopted, you will see this thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-five on the same line that Mayor was referencing on page sixteen of the, the updated mid-year financial summary. So that thirty-eight sixty-five is how we ended the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And then what we're adjusting through the independent audit, there is a one point seven million dollar adjustment. So that's a positive number. Then you have council appropriations that I have to account for that happened after the budget was adopted. So that is removing four hundred and twenty-four thousand from this overall number, giving us a subtotal of the one point three one seven million dollars. Then the rest of the numbers from column three through sixteen are the adjustments that we're making at mid-year. So there's some vacancies. We always have staff salary savings. So this, I indicated what those salary savings amount to, and then the mid-year requests that we have. And so some of them are fund balance transfers, as you will see for item four, five, and six. These are projections, once again. I like to put them into the mid-year just to account that if we need to transfer this money by the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, then we can. If we don't need these fund balance transfers, then we won't transfer this money.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, that was a great question, because sometimes people look at a page and they see red and they can freak out. But he
I just have two more questions.
Sure.
And, and that is, okay, what's on page nine? It has exclude UAL annual prepayments. Maybe, I mean, what's that one? What's all that about?
So the UAL is our unfunded accrued liability. This is the amount of money that we pay annually to CalPERS for, for retirement. So this is an obligation that we pay every year. The reason why we show it, but we exclude it, because this particular table is showing you the year-to-date expenditures as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So we always stop at some point in time so we can calculate these numbers and then give a report. So one thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four is that mid-year stopping point. We paid this eight million dollars January, excuse me, July of twenty-twenty-three. So within this fiscal year. So this report is really just saying, from the adopted budget to the actual amount that has been expended up until January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, this, we, you know, we've so far expended fifty-one percent, or thirty-one million dollars. But if you back out that eight million dollars, you would see that we're at around forty-eight percent year-to-date, that we have in expenditures that have already been realized or actualized.
Thank you. And then the last one I have is the water. I noticed on page ten, you're looking at water way down in the bottom in the sewer where it says refuse. And in last year, nineteen million, and now twenty-five. Is that because, how did it go up so high? From one year to, is that increase? That's an increase, right?
Yeah, so I think you're looking at page ten, you said?
Ten, yes.
So for water, the adopted revenue is what the first column is showing, and that's the nineteen point six million dollar number. And so again, this is just more, this was breaking it down by general fund, and then this is all the enterprise and the special funds. So that's the same, same exact process. So the actuals, or the amount that we have spent so far is eleven million in the water fund. That could be inclusive of capital projects, salaries, all things that we are charging to the water fund. So to date, we're at, I'm sorry, fifty-nine point nine percent. The font was small.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, we, we've gone through these before. Again, I know Maria and I have been here since two thousand and three, two thousand and five, and we see these budgets, and we always hear where potentially we could be if we don't take the appropriate steps.
Right.
But we always take the appropriate steps. That's the idea behind telling us these things. And so if you had seen what was projected a few years ago, well, if we didn't do anything by twenty-twenty-four, we would be in dire straits. But we're not. We've got a good hefty chunk of change. But it doesn't mean we put our guard down and say, hey, we got money left over. Let's, you know, it's like having an ex, a checking book, right? You ran out of money at the bank, but you don't continue writing checks just because you've got more, more paper in the book.
Right.
And, and so, so Mr. Mayor, just to start off, I, I really would like to thank the Finance Department and all the staff for providing this report for us.
Absolutely.
There's, there's a, a few highlights that I think, you know, I would like to just, you know, let the council know is, I mean, when I first joined council, all we heard was we had a nineteen million dollar deficit, right? Nineteen million dollars in just a short year and a half, two years. Because we've been able to address a lot of the issues, because we've understood that we needed to, you know, to understand that, what the projections were telling us, and worked through all this effort, we're seeing this, this projected deficit continue to shrink every year that we've, we've brought the budget to us. So really a great job by our staff to address those issues, to, to bring on, you know, recommendations. And really, you know, I, I'd just like to say, you know, great job by our council to understand that there were some tough decisions that we needed to make as a group, and we, we stood up and we said, hey, let's, let's do it. Because we understood the importance of getting it done now and not passing the buck down the line. So congratulations to all of us.
Yeah, let me see if I can, Raul, I want to test your memory. Back in two thousand and five, I know, I know. We were on the brink of bankruptcy back in two thousand and five. Remember that? Do you remember what the balance was in the bank?
I think it was in two thousand and five. Mr. Mayor, I believe it was in two thousand and three, right after the historic recall.
Right.
And I believe that our bank balance was less than a hundred thousand dollars at one point in time.
That's right.
How's that for the memory? Does that work? Okay?
Well, I'm impressed. I'm impressed.
That was a trick question, I know, when you said two thousand and five.
You remembered your name too, which impresses me a lot. But no, the, the, me and Raul, we tease each other like that. But the idea is that we've gone through these challenges multiple times throughout the years. The, the era of, of the regime, that, and that's what happens when people aren't careful. You had a regime here that really exhausted our reserves to that point. And then, you know, through council and Gary Millman did a fantastic job. You, don't let it go to your head too much, but you did a great job of recovering a lot of that money. There it goes. Hang on to his feet. He's going to float away pretty soon. Don't let him go, Ms. Avalos. Don't let him fly too high. But that's the reality of it. But we faced all these challenges. And then, just when we thought we were like, okay, you know, the Titanic is not going to sink, with a recession hit. And then everybody pitched in, everybody did what needed to be done. And then we got over that hump. And then we brought the shopping center in. And everything is, it's history. And so where we were from less than a hundred thousand dollars back in two thousand and three, to having the twenty-eight million dollars, you know, and again, going with the facts, these are facts, that we are one of the lowest. And, and again, I, I'll, I'll show you the numbers I, I have, Wendy, because I did, I do have all the list of all the cities and their, and their sales tax and the utility users' tax. It took me a weekend to do that.
Yeah, I just want to mention that. We got to also give credit to our former city manager, Chris Jeffers, because he really helped us, because he came from the finance world, and he, I know he worked with Wendy real closely. And he also pushed us to, to address some of the issues like the sewer and others. So I think that's also, we have to give credit, with credit as due, and the council, because they are, so just wanted to mention that for the record.
It was a team effort.
I would also like to echo Chris, who was our finance director at some point, who worked collaboratively with our city manager, Chris. And Wendy, you had an opportunity to work with him. So I know that when the team comes together, you know, for the benefit of the community.
I don't want to leave anybody out, though. I, I think everyone, I mean, Arturo, I don't know how many grants he's gotten for us.
Yes.
Steve Costley, everybody else. Darren, I don't know. I mean, he doesn't have much
He's getting the money. He's going to get the funding.
Oh, yeah. So you're getting all the gifts. Okay, look, so let's go ahead and I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Okay, so a motion in a second, items one through twelve. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Madam City Clerk?
No, I'm going to abstain on, on the
Yeah, Wendy, call us.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rios, Councilmember Rios, and second by Ms. Avalos, Councilwoman Avalos.
Roll call. Councilmember Avalos? Councilmember Avalos? Oh, pardon me. I'm trying to help Vice Mayor Davila. Yes. Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes, and abstain on number six.
You're recusing yourself from number six?
Yes. And the reason why is because I live right next to Tweedy Boulevard, and it's on the Tweedy Mile.
Thank you. Mayor Urzado?
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right, yes. And then I'm going to abstain on item number one, because it's the urban orchard, and I live right by there. I'm going to abstain, abstain on item number four, because it's just been my custom, anything dealing with the parks, and we're talking about security at the parks. And item number six, because it's Tweedy and it goes along the park as well. And even though I make no money there, just out of, out of habit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, where are we at now?
We are on item number thirteen.
Yes.
The City Council will consider introducing proposed ordinance amending section one point zero four point zero six five point two of section one point zero four point zero six five, salary of members, dash purpose of chapter one zero, one point zero four, City Council of Title One, Administration and Personnel of the Southgate Municipal Code, increasing the City Council and the City Treasurer salary levels.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this item is before you as per your direction. I'll just give a quick recap and a summary of what's before you. January ninth, at a city council meeting, it was requested that information about a newly passed Senate bill, which is three twenty-nine, Bill three twenty-nine, could be brought back to council for discussion. And on March twelfth, the March twelfth meeting, that was brought back. We discussed that bill and the fact that it was setting new salary cap guidance for cities within the city of, within the state of California, based on population brackets, and set caps for that. And the author, Senator Dodd, gave in his explanation that he wanted to see increased pay levels for city councils, because in his quote was, no one runs for city council to get rich, but the low levels of pay make it much harder to balance careers and personal obligations with the call to serve their community. And he also went on to say, it's hard for working people and those from diverse or disadvantaged backgrounds to run for council. By allowing councils to adjust their maximum pay to reflect inflation, my bill will remove barriers to achieve more equitable representation in local government. So that was his goal with that legislation. It passed by the state government, became effective January first of this year. At the council meeting on the twelfth, we talked about the change, which moved the cap for cities the size of Southgate in the range of seventy-five thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand, that the cap could be nineteen hundred dollars per month for the salary portion of a council's compensation. And the current rate for city councils is seven hundred and ninety dollars a month. So this is a difference of one thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The city council are all set at seven hundred ninety dollars a month, as well as the city treasurer, who's pegged to match the council. Prior changes to city council rates were originally six hundred dollars a month, in, established in nineteen eighty-six, six hundred and fifty dollars a month in two thousand and seventeen, and then in twenty twenty-two, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So certainly, the rate of inflation, if we start at the six hundred rate, would be a much different number than the seven hundred and ninety. After the discussion with the council, it was determined to bring back an ordinance to start the first of two steps, to propose that nineteen hundred dollar cap as being the new number for the City Council of Southgate. And this ordinance is before you for your review and reading. In the event that you choose to move forward with this, it would return at the next council meeting for final adoption. By adoption, it would become an ordinance, but the actual time that compensation would change would be after the next election. That's a rule behind this compensation. That would put it in the realm of December of this year. So any people running for council, for the next council, would know that, they would know ahead of time what their monthly amount would be, should be nineteen hundred dollars a month. And that is the end of my report, unless there's any other questions.
No, let me go ahead and open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Step forward. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. Okay, so again, I, the reason I brought this up is because throughout the years, and let's go back, you had said nineteen eighty-six, I think it was nineteen eighty-four. And actually, it started back in the nineteen sixties, but let's go with nineteen eighty-four. It was established at six hundred dollars a month. And cities had the ability to raise it by five percent every single year. They just had to come back every single year, put on the agenda and do it. And some cities do that. So someone made a, a comment and looked at it and said, hey, look, they're going from seven ninety to nineteen hundred. They're giving themselves a raise. They're not doing anything. And that's a hundred and forty-one percent higher than normal. Well, what's neglected to be mentioned is that in the forty years, we've only actually increased the salary twice in those forty years. That means for thirty-eight years, it was always no, 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 zero, 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 that part is left out. And this nineteen hundred wasn't chosen by Gil or any council member here, or, or Rob. He's a nice guy, but I don't think he did that. And it wasn't Wendy who said, hey, we got tons of money. Let's go ahead and do that. This was done by Senate bill that was passed, was put together by Senator Dodd. And the idea was to compensate people fairly. These are part-time jobs, but I got to tell you, we're on the clock twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And the amount of effort, work that goes into it is, is phenomenal. And I'll take the criticism that people want to throw out there, but at the end of the day, this is the right thing to do. I was looking at some of the cities around us. Huntington Park, back in two thousand and six, increased their dollar amount to one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month. And they've had that since then. There were a couple of cities who also, what they did is that they doubled the rate. And that was because in two thousand and eleven, the League of California Cities had put out a report that said that if cities had not increased in twenty years, they can adopt an ordinance, an ordinance effectively doubling its salary twenty times, five percent, which is a hundred percent. So if cities were making six hundred dollars a month, they could have doubled it to twelve a month. We chose not to. But see, that part is left out, out of convenience. You know, I don't know why they hate out there, but this is just the nonsense. And I want to make sure that my council colleagues are respected for what they do. And I know a lot of the stuff that we say here gets twisted, but we got audio, we got video now. And I hope we people are able to see this. This council and all the councils since nineteen eighty-four, twice have increased the salary. And every year, it could have been raised by five percent. So out of the forty years, twice it was done. Thirty-eight years, it was no, no increase. No, thank you. No, we don't even want to discuss it. But because the state changed it to nineteen hundred, we place it on the agenda. Anyhow, any other comments? None? Okay, I'll, go ahead.
I do want to, I'll bring up, no.
I'll bring up... No. And I did ask Rob for the commissioners. I want you to, in the near meetings, coming up meetings, I do want you to bring up the commissioners' stipends of all the commissions, and also, let's look into the city clerks. Because that's something that we need to look into also. So in the nearest meetings. Maybe not next meeting, but maybe in the end of April meeting. But that's something that we need to bring up too, also.
Certainly. Thanks for that clarity. I have started that research and can bring it back for the second meeting of April. The commissioners' current pay per meeting. I'll do a little research on surrounding cities for comparison, and then also have information on the clerks' compensation.
Excellent. Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Rob, can you go into the explanation on... I know in the report, it says that the increases would take into effect as of December 2024. Can you touch on to that and why that is?
It's been the case for, I don't know how many years back, but any changes to city compensation, there's, in the state code, it talks about it needing to not be an immediate benefit. It must take effect when at least one of the council members is new in their term, which typically is at an election. I think the concept would be that it sort of has to go through the elected process to make sure that people get to weigh in on that versus it happening, say, the day after an election and then changing everyone's compensation. So it's been the rule ever since, as long as I've been around in the business, at least in California for 20 years that I've been here. So that is the rule. It's the same here, and in this case, that would be December, when the council members are sworn in, it could take into effect.
Right. So I just wanted to point that out, because I think there is a perception out there that it's for an immediate increase to our council. It isn't. You know, we have three council members that are up for reelection, you know, and I wish them all the best, and I hope that we're all up here together in December. But they may not even be able to benefit from it, but they understand the importance of being able to be, you know, fair across the board.
Yeah, and let me just add that it is actually written in the state legislature as to once you make a determination to increase the salary, that it cannot take into effect until after the election. So it's written in the laws. So, but we knew that. You know, we knew that coming in. There was also talk about, maybe we should do this, where it's automatic, an automatic increase. Well, not only would I have objected to that, and I think all of us would have objected to that, but it's also written in the Dodge document that these increases cannot be set where automatically, every single year, you get 5%, 5%. So that, I just wanted to clear that up as well. It's not us doing things like that. It's that, that's what the law says.
Mr. Mayor, just two points to supplement what you just said, and the city manager said, is that this is a state law applicable to all states, excuse me, to all cities up and down the state, and it's dependent on the number of residents living within the particular city. So you are limiting yourself to the prescribed amount set by state standards. Also, you know, in furtherance of this transparency, you're doing it well in advance of the opening of any filing period, so that any candidate who wanted to participate in the next cycle of elections would have ample notice of this increased salary that the state legislature says all five of you are entitled to receive if you go through the procedural process here.
Yeah, and yes.
If I may, and again, just like the senator indicated, this is not a job that we get rich from. That's the reality. It's a part-time job, where we need to attend two meetings per month. But the reality is, is that we don't just attend two meetings. We are constantly having conversations with department heads, with our city manager, with our city attorney, with our city clerk, with our treasurer, with residents, and we're on the clock 24/7. So the fact that the state is now requiring us to do something about it is just a showing of the times of inflation. Now, three of us work, have a full-time job. If we want to participate in any activities that are during the day, we have to take a day off. And some of us have taken days off without pay. Simple as that.
Yeah.
Because if I was going to get paid here, would I get paid at work? It goes beyond the 1,900. And I'm sure that would go for all of our salaries, those of us that are employed. So again, we don't do this because we want to get rich. We do this because we want to serve our community in the best of our capacity. And I think it's a testament of what we've done with our finances, with the assistance of all of our department heads, and our city manager and city attorney. We're looking at what we can do. But again, we always have to take into consideration what is best for our community. And the reality is, is that we don't do this for the money. We do this because it's a calling, and it's something that we want to do. I was asked, why do I do this? Because at the end of the day, I live here, and I want to have a seat at the table to be able to make the correct decisions, as hard as they are sometimes, personally, but for the benefit of our community. Because we are all here for a very short amount of time. We don't know if today or tomorrow is going to be our last day here. But at least I can say, I did my civic duty. I served my community to the best of my ability. And I would think that would go for my colleagues as well.
And again, I don't... Yes, I do. I want to keep on going. So look, I've talked to people from all over the place, not just here in Southgate, but even outside, friends of mine from my high school, and they think that we get paid a ton of money, and when I tell them, I make $790 a month, they think I'm joking. And I encourage them to look, to see what their council members make in the cities that they're in, and they realize that their council members don't make that much money either. Because these are state-set guidelines. And, you know, we all have to follow them. Now, what happened in Val years ago is that the council members and the city manager there bamboozled the community in telling them, hey, let's tell the state of California that we don't need them. We can make our own decisions. Let's go from a general law city to a charter city. And the people believed it. They were bamboozled. They voted to go from a general law to a charter, and they immediately went to, they were making close to $90,000, $80,000 a year. In fact, I had sent you an LA Times article, and I'm going to encourage everybody to look at it. It's an LA Times article from 2011. And maybe for the next meeting, can you provide that for, as part of it? You should actually see what that article says. What it actually shows is that... It shows all the cities. The number one city on the top is Vernon, and it says, this is what the council members in Vernon should be making. It's something like $12,000 a year, but they're making $150,000, $80,000 a year, their council members. That's an understatement. Wow is just an understatement. And then you start seeing every city. A young man from the community reached out to me, and we're talking about this. And when I told him I had this article, and I sent it to him, he said, wow. He said some other colorful words on top of that, so you can imagine who the person was. And he could not believe what he was looking at. And what it actually says is that, based on the population and based on the percentages that you can give yourselves, we are below what we should have been making all along, but we've chosen not to. The other thing is that based, even with all of this, we hear all the abuse, all the harassment that we get, attacks to our families, attacks to moms, my wife, my daughter, my son, somebody pulling images of my grandchildren from social media and using it on a hit piece. We put up with that stuff. We shouldn't have to. But with all of that, you know, we're not, as has been said already, we're not out here to try to get rich, but we deal with it, because we're here to help the city move forward. And it looks just, by looking at the financial status of the city, we're doing pretty darn good. We really are. Okay, so look, you have a question? Okay, okay, I'll make the motion to move forward on this. I need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Ortado?
But she's the vice mayor. You said council member Davila.
I know, I started, but then I quit.
Correct. I just want to fix that.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Well, you can't be... Yes, yes. All right, next item. It's still you. Item number 14.
The City Council will consider approving the warrant register for March 26, 2024. The grand total is $4,111,458.
Mr. Auditor, you're up to bat. Hit a home run here, will you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to any member here in the audience who had any questions regarding that warrant register. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that. Bring it back to council. What are your wishes?
So moved.
Second. Okay, she beat me to it.
Who beat you?
It's women's month, so I'll concede.
Roll call. Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios? Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Ortado?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, would like to adjourn tonight's council meeting in memoriam of Gerardo Rendon. He's the husband of Miss Maria Rendon, long lifetime resident.
She's the one who lived on Cypress, right?
Yes, her husband passed away about a week and a half ago. So again, if we can close in his memoriam. Thank you.
She's from Cypress, not Madison. Yeah. And also, please keep those, the victims of that boat accident in your prayers. That was horrible. That was horrible. So anyhow, thank you. Make sure we get the name. She did, okay. All right, we're adjourned.
Adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.